All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 16th meeting of the Whitehall City Council. For the purpose of considering since matters that will come before it, I'm going to now call the meeting to order and ask that you all, I'm gonna ask everyone to rise for a moment of silence. And please remain standing for the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Thomas, please call and roll.
Bailey.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Elmore.
Here.
Coniston.
Here.
Cantor.
Here.
Here.
Morrison.
Here.
Graham.
President.
Mr. President, I have to move to excuse the absent member.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and second by Mr. Cantor to excuse the absent member. Ms. Thomas, please call and roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
All right. The absent member has been excused. We have the use this evening, the October 2nd, 2018, minutes for the agenda and regular meeting.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the October 2nd minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Coniston and second by Ms. Elmore for approval of the October 2nd, 2018 Agenda and Regular Meeting. Ms. Thomas, please call and roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. Next, we have a special presentation by Zach Woodruff, the Director of Development. I'm gonna turn it over to him.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just wanted to come for counsel. As most of you know, in 2016, the city engaged Sappertine Associates to do a community attitude survey. And so, this summer, specifically in August, we conducted another survey of residents to gauge their attitude on myriad different topics, to, in part, determine where the city was doing well and where we still have work to do. And also, gauge feedback from residents on their priorities on a whole host of issues. And so, I just wanted to introduce Martin Sappertine for Sappertine Associates. He's gonna go through the results this evening and be able to provide some of that insight to City Council and to all everybody watching on Facebook. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Sappertine. Thank you.
Thanks. Well, I'm happy to be back. When you do a survey for the first time, it's hard to interpret the results because you have a point in time. But the second survey gives you a little bit of trend. You can see if attitudes changed up, attitudes changed down. But really, what will be exciting is two years from now when we have re-dated ones. Then we can tell whether what we're seeing this time is actually the beginning of a trend or just a blip. So I'm gonna walk through the results with you. Feel free to ask questions at any time. You can save them to the end, whatever you like. I always think that the value of these surveys is to give community residents a voice, give them an opportunity in an unintimidating way to voice their opinions, but also to provide, say, to officials with the grist of decision-making, with data on which to make decisions, especially as you all plan for the future. And as Zach said, a similar study was conducted in 2016. Let me tell you a little bit about the methodology. This was a telephone survey. Three hundred and fifty telephone interviews with residents of Whitehall. And... Sampling frame, the numbers that we called were developed from a list of registered voters. But because we were concerned that not all of your residents are registered to vote, that we incorporated into that the phone numbers of folks who have children in the Whitehall schools but were not on the registered voter list to broaden out the participation. We did not get the names, however, of the folks who were on the school list for confidentiality. And then, like the survey last time, the majority of the interviews are conducted on landlines. When I first got into this business, there were no cellphones. So 100% of the interviews were done on landlines. And now, I can anticipate, in the next couple of years, 100% of the interviews will be done on cellphones. And think about, the average length of this is 20 minutes. If I asked each one of you individually, would you stay on the telephone for 20 minutes doing the survey? All of you, I'm sure, would say no. But, believe it or not, if the topic is salient, people will, in fact, stay on the phone for an extended period of time. Yeah, stay closer to this. Margin of error for this study is plus or minus 5.1 percentage points. So if I tell you a number's 50%, it could be 45% or 55% at the 95% level of confidence. And the data collected during the interviews were weighted to better reflect what we know about the community. And think about this. To complete the interviews, we had to dial 9,039 unique telephone numbers. So that's not calling multiple times. That's, I mean, each number may have been called multiple times, but 9,039 unique telephone numbers. So the ratio is 25 to 25 numbers for each completed interview. In 2016, when we did this, it was 15 to 1. So the process is becoming increasingly difficult, which should lead you to wonder, to what extent are the data still representative? Like, so many people either don't answer their phones or refuse to participate. So a good place to start is the Pew Research folks. They've got some great literature on how even with low incidence, seven, or... Even with low incidence, 7, 8, 9%, you can still get representative data because people who refuse are randomly distributed across the population. And to demonstrate this...
It's your phone.
Let's see. Okay, to demonstrate this, I have compared our sample findings, demographically, to the actual data from the census. And if you compare, you'll see on gender, we're pretty good. Not exact, but pretty good. On age, we're pretty good. On race, pretty good. Home ownership, children enrolled in the schools, all pretty close. And even political jurisdiction, the differences between the actual numbers and the sample numbers are not bad. All right, so the first topic is, Whitehall is a place to live. And as a place to live, half the residents consider Whitehall average. That's this green part of the bar of the pie. And one out of three consider the city excellent or above average. So how does this compare to what we saw two years ago? And here, what we see is the numbers changed very little since 2016. And I'm gonna argue that this question is a lagging indicator. This question is people looking at today but focused backwards. The next question is that I think of as a leading indicator. But before I show you that, I want to show you who considers the community excellent or above average. And what you'll see is older residents, folks who own homes. And folks who have been here between six and 15 years are the most likely to consider the community excellent or above average. And what's interesting is you can see the newest residents are the least likely to think that. Okay, so look at this. Nine out of 10 residents agree that Whitehall is heading in the right direction. Staggeringly good numbers, but a orderly Gerdias font was it two years ago. Two years ago, that number, 87, was 78. This is forward-looking data. And why it's important to distinguish this from the original slide is the results of what you're doing may not yet have been realized and appreciated or realized and internalized, but folks see what you're doing. So this shows an increase that we hope will appear in the numbers two years from now on that first question, where it will be perceived as a better place to live because of what you're doing that now makes folks think you're moving in the right direction. Let me get that. Clipper's broken. Okay, so residents wrote, what are the issues, concerns, or problems facing the city in Whitehall? What should your local public officials consider their two or three highest priorities? And what we see here is crime and drugs top the list. These are coded, open-ended responses. So folks just called us and they put it into categories. Improved city services, improved schools, improved housing, improved amenities, improved the economy. The improved city services category at 32% is at least three-quarters dealing with streets and roads and potholes and curbs. And then, if we compare that to two years ago, we see that crime and drugs dropped a tiny bit, not much at all. Improved city services, that went up a little. But look how close those numbers are from two years ago, which should make you comfortable that the data aren't random, that you can call a completely different group of 350 people and get results that are consistent. So you take all the words that people said and you pour them into a word cloud, and this is what comes out. This is similar to what you saw on the list, but I thought I'd show you graphically. City services. So most of the residents are satisfied with basic city services, including first responders, snow removal, and garbage collection. And if you look all the way to the right, you'll see you're talking about nine out of 10. Nine out of 10 satisfied. But if you split the bar between red and blue, the very satisfied portion of those bars are longer, suggesting there are more folks who are very satisfied than somewhat satisfied. And if we take a look at 2016, we see, once again, very little has changed on this front. Continuing on, most residents also are satisfied with leaf and brush collection, litter control, and street and road maintenance. And it's not surprising that street and road maintenance, including potholes, is the lowest in this battery. Because if you remember, it came up open-ended. This is prompted, but when we asked open-ended, streets and roads came up as a problem. So arguably, it makes sense that this is lower. And if we look at 2016, we see little change, although this year, the streets and roads is slower than it was in 2016. We don't have a bar for leaf and brush collection for 2016 because we changed the question because you have a new leaf and brush collection process. And the city officials. So we saw satisfaction high before, but here we see, again, nine out of 10 are satisfied with how city officials are planning for the future, how they're improving the community as a place to live, how they're strengthening the community's economy. And as you look at last year, a couple of things jump out at me. First, the bars are longer this year, suggesting more satisfaction. But what's always more important is look at the top portions of these bars. These are the very satisfied people. In each of these three cases, they are longer. So not only are more people satisfied, but more people are very satisfied. And that's a good direction. Then we move on to managing city finances, addressing the concerns of residents, keeping residents informed. And again, you'll see little difference, really, from 2016, but higher continues the trend that at least in the top two, those bars are longer, suggesting more satisfaction. Satisfaction among a greater percentage of residents. How about city amenities? So here we see that when it comes to community-sponsored events, parks and park facilities, programs organized through parks and recreation, satisfaction was relatively high in 2016 and higher again, albeit in some cases by a small amount. But these numbers are all strong now. I think all of them are above 80% for 2018. So once again, seven out of 10 residents have been to a community event during the past few years. So you can see that 69%. Last time, we did the survey, it was a little bit higher. The food and truck, the food truck and Fun Fest was the highest attended, followed by the fireworks viewing party. They were especially popular. And when we move on to contacting the city, we see that one out of three residents contacted a city official over the past year to raise an issue, express a concern, or to get information. And you can see in the little blue boxes that those numbers are virtually identical to what we saw two years ago. And then, about 35%, we have 14 people, 14% of the people communicating once and a fifth contacting more than once. And this gives you a little insight into who's doing the contacting. So we see an own-rent difference, a black-white difference, and an income difference. And to some extent, those are correlated. But it's not surprising, for example, that owners might be calling more often or contacting more often than renters. So how are these folks contacting city officials? The phone is number one, in person is number two, and email is a distant third. We do the survey for New Albany, another small community, and it's the same thing. It's like people call. But can you imagine Columbus going in person to see a city official? You know, in a small community, you get a lot of people dropping by, it seems. And when we compare that to last year, we see not much change, although it is noticeable that fewer folks used email. A plurality of contacts involve the Department of Public Service. That's the line and share, 44%. But what's really noticeable is although 17% contacted the police, while the Public Service Department had more contacts, the police have noticeably fewer contacts, from 28% down to 17%. And then, seven out of 10 residents were satisfied with the customer service they received. So that would be the very satisfied and the somewhat satisfied. And it's interesting that amongst so many satisfied, a majority of them are in this top category, very satisfied. So the satisfaction dropped a little from the 2016 survey, from 73 to 68, close to the margin of error. But here's what's truly interesting is when you cross very satisfied with the customer service someone received with your level of education, what you find is, the higher the education, the more likely they are to be very satisfied. And I argue that's important to know because I argue that I don't think you're doing anything differently for the folks who are more educated. I'm not sure you'll know who they are when they call, other than to say, that my bet is there's something about the ability to communicate more effectively with higher education. So your ability to communicate with them and their ability to understand and their ability to communicate with you arguably are affected by education and that may account for their being more likely to be very satisfied. And then it turned out that the dissatisfied residents claimed that their issue is not resolved or that the service provider was rude. And here's some open hands that you can read in the materials we provided that will give you some flavor for that. But part of what happens is that there's a confusion between bad service and bad news. And it's important to keep that in mind. I'll give you an example. So we call folks, we call folks who have customer service from a food company. And one call was, boy, the service was terrible. And we said, why was that? And the person said, well, I've had these boots for three years and the heels wore out and I wanted to replace the heels for me. And the customer service person said, we do that for the first year, but not for three years. That's not the policy of the company. So that refusal ended up being recorded. It's not bad news. Gee, I didn't realize that the warranty was for a year. It got coded as bad service because the person didn't get what they were after. So sometimes, when you see the very dissatisfied or the somewhat dissatisfied, it is bad service. But sometimes, it's also bad news. So keep those in perspective, it is important. Safety and crime. And eight out of 10 residents feel at least somewhat safe. Three out of 10 feel very safe. And then, if you compare that to 2016, you'll see very small differences. Not a lot of change there. And then we see white residents are less likely to feel very safe than African-Americans. And you can run your eye across to see who's above the line and who's below the line, although there's not huge differences in any of the bars. What's the most common reasons for not feeling safe? Well, this is interesting, a couple of things. So first, you'll see reading about crime, just in general. Then if you skip after the crime victims, reading or hearing about crime, break-ins and theft, reading, hearing about crime, shootings and murders. So we have some portion of folks who are actually victims of crime, so they may feel unsafe. But three of these categories are people not experiencing crime. They're hearing about crime and projecting that on to the community. So that's something to be thinking about in the way people get information and how that might be addressed. And you've got too many drug dealers, a small percentage. Gangs, you need a smaller percentage. Four out of 10 residents have been a victim of crime. And if we compare that to 2016, it's virtually identical. The most common victims of crime include white residents, big difference here, older residents, folks who own their homes. And then, it's also true that those folks with more tenure in the community are more likely to be victims. And this is not a victim in the past year. This is a victim ever. The most common types of crime by far, theft, cars, homes, yards, on people's person, the most common types of crime. And if you compare that to 2016, it's changed little. Half the residents know a victim of crime committed in Whitehall. And if you compare that to 2016, those numbers are identical. Haven't changed at all. It's interesting that 69% of the victims know a victim, but only 37% of the non-victims know a victim. And that might have something to do with where folks live and the geography of the community. More than eight out of 10 residents weren't aware of the safer Whitehall initiative. So we've got all these folks in red not aware. And very few respondents here actually attended the safer Whitehall Town Hall. So that's, when I look at that pie, it's a big opportunity for communicating. Priorities. So residents were told of nine potential community initiatives and encouraged to identify their top priority. And that little asterisk next to the word initiatives is to let you know that when we read the list of initiatives, everybody gets them in a randomized order, not the same word. And so those initiatives include housing that targets senior citizens and empty nesters, and then young professionals, and then mixed-use buildings, recreational programs for all ages, a dog park, industrial or warehouse space, neighborhood retail stores, office space, and a YMCA. So among the potential initiatives tested, interest was strongest in a YMCA. So after the list was read and they rated each one, then they essentially ranked them by telling us what their top priority was of that nine. And the YMCA came at head and shoulders, followed by housing that targets young professionals and recreational programming. What's interesting is that all of the retail, commercial, and industrial initiatives were pretty low. And then, who's interested in the YMCA? And sometimes, I do this just to see if the data makes sense. Like, who would you expect to be interested in the YMCA? Women, 35 to 54 with kids. I'm only pretty typical YMCA crowd. And then residents were presented the three additional potential community initiatives and encouraged to identify the top priority here. And these include more programs offered through the Parks and Rec Department, repairing and repaving streets, emergency preparedness training for residents. And if you've been following along, the weather should be clear. Okay. Repaving and repairing streets top the other two options. And this is sort of the third time in the results that this issue has surfaced. And then, who is interested in repairing and repaving streets? And it turns out, men. The women were interested in the white, the men were interested in repairing. Older residents, and not surprisingly, owners as opposed to renters. Repairing and repaving streets, good for home value. Parks and Recreation Programming. So here, we told the residents of five programming options recently. So here, we told the residents of five programming options recently added by the Parks and Rec Department. And we encouraged them to identify the most appealing option personally. And these included youth sports, the arts, job skills, wellness and nutrition, and life skills. So we said, "Which of those is the most appealing to you personally?" And interestingly enough, they split the community almost evenly. Within a percentage point or two across the top four. And then, I also put the percentage of folks who said high interest, and they're very close also. So, the arts at twelve percent is the lowest. And we asked a question very similar to this in Dublin. We do this in Dublin and Grove City. And, I hate to say it, but arts is almost always less. It's really difficult to build our scheme around the arts. And if you're following in the news, the ticket tax issue for Columbus, you'll have a pushback on that. Heartland Bank. So three out of four residents have seen Heartland Bank's new facility on Hamilton Road. Seventy-five percent. And among residents aware of Heartland's move to Whitehall, almost half, that's these guys here, see it as positive. Nearly everyone else has no opinion, and very few negatives. So forty-six percent, almost half, have a positive impression. And what's interesting, in 2016, we asked, "You know, this Heartland Bank is coming to town, do you think that's a good idea or not?" And in 2016, seventy-four percent of the residents had positive impressions of this impending move. And so the difference between the seventy-four percent and the forty-six percent is the difference between sort of everybody imagining what might be and then what is. But, it's sad to say that people are disappointed in what is, but it is to say that people are not sure what is. And they know Heartland's come, but they may not be aware of what those implications are because the number of folks, or percentage of folks with negative impressions is pretty small. And then this issue of where the property tax from the bank going to be used, and only seventeen percent, less than one in five, actually one in six, are not familiar with the plan for the income tax. Another opportunity for communication. Then we asked about Norton Crossing. And three out of ten residents have heard about plans for Norton Crossing. That's these folks. But again, seven out of ten have not heard. Among the residents who are aware of plans for Norton Crossing, most of them, eight out of ten, have positive impressions of the mixed-use project. And then, nearly half have very positive impressions. And again, small group with negative impressions. Property redevelopment. So half the residents favor the city's approach of acquiring blighted and nuisance properties. That's this half. The seven percent, maybe the same seven percent as you've been following along, right? That's a small group of folks. A lot of people with no opinion. And here you'll see differences in race and in income. In terms of who has those positive impressions. And then we said, "Well, why do you think that?" This was an open-ended question. "Why do you feel positively about this process?" "Improves the city's reputation, eliminates ICEors, reduces crime, makes cities safer." Lots of different reasons. But then we said to the folks who were with a negative impression, we said, "Well, why are you opposed to the city's approach?" And the most common objections, and there weren't many, involved people who live there will lose their homes. Whether that's true or not is aside the point. That's what folks said, thought. "It seems like government overreach and the cost to taxpayers will not be worth it." And again, another opportunity for communication to continue to get the word out about what the benefits are. Communications. So here we said, "Where do you get most of your information and news about Whitehall, excluding family and friends, not with who's there?" And what we see is that Facebook, at twenty-six percent, tops the list, followed by the print version of This Week. This is a turning point. So, from 2016, all the way backwards to the beginning of time, well, to the beginning of Whitehall's time, the most common source of information was probably print, newspaper. Now, it's flipped. The digital, social media is the most common source of information.
Can I say something? A lot of people don't get the This Week or the Whitehall news anymore. I've lived on Redport for fifteen years and I've never gotten it. So that might be part of your...
And it may be, but they, but they, but when we did the survey in 2016, they didn't get it either.
Right, but yeah, that's included, my fifteen years.
So, if the distribution of This Week stayed constant over time, folks get it, folks don't get it. What hasn't stayed constant is social media. Is that there are now more folks who are wired or wireless and more folks on Facebook. And what we'll see is that nearly eight out of ten residents have a Facebook account up slightly because you're running out of people who aren't on Facebook. And the little blue box suggests that virtually every one in the community who you can reach is wired, has internet access. But this is interesting. So, you look at Facebook by age to see if there's some age relationship. And the youngest residents, the eighteen to thirty-four-year-olds, almost nine out of ten have a Facebook account. But you look at that group between thirty-five and fifty-four, it's almost the same. So the older folks, the folks in the group that I'm in, it's not only fifty-nine percent, but my bet is two years from now, that number will be higher because the folks who are in the category below can age into the higher group. They're going to age into the higher group with a Facebook account. And what's really important is that forty-two percent not only have a Facebook account, but they have been to the city's page. So is that number high or is that number low? Well, when you compare it to 2016, that is an enormous jump in two years. It went from twenty-eight percent having been to the city's page to forty-two percent. And there, sort of before your very eyes, is you have the future of communicating with residents because you can reach most of them more easily and more often. And then, it turns out that two out of three residents use a smartphone most often to access the internet. And why is this important? Because when I sit down and I'm typing a newsletter or something, I always think in terms of a screen, like a big screen. And then, when you look at it on your phone, you can't read it. So as you think about communicating to residents, their first choice is not a desktop or a laptop. For two-thirds of them, their first choice is a smartphone with a small screen, which has an impact on not only why you communicate, but how you communicate it. And you can see even that's up fifty-eight percent two years ago. Couple of highlights. So in 2016, half of Whitehall's residents considered the city an average place to live. Nearly nine out of ten, however, agreed that Whitehall was heading in the right direction. So from 2016 to 2018, the Whitehall as a place to live has not changed much. That's the lagging indicator. But what has changed is more people today view the city moving in the right direction. And I'm reasonably confident that two years from now, that lagging indicator will catch up some. Drugs and crime remain the most common concerns. Satisfaction with basic city services, city officials, and city amenities is high. I'm not sure if you noticed or not, but remember the evaluation of the police? It's like ninety-five percent, it was very high. And the number of calls to the police was down. There's a big flag, a little arrow there. So, crime is sort of the number-one issue. Folks are not blaming the police for it. You know, they're recognizing what the situation is and apparently appreciating what the police are doing. And that's important because when you look at crimes and drugs remain the most common concern, it's easy to think, "Well, the police seem to be doing more or not satisfying the demands of the community." But that appears not to be the case. And then among the nine community initiatives that we tested, interest was strongest in the YMCA. And as we saw several times, interest was strong as well in repairing and repaving roads. And among residents aware of the move to Whitehall by Heartland Bank, almost half see it as positive and nearly everyone else has no opinion. So maybe they should communicate more. And then few residents are aware of the city's plan to use the income tax that they generate for park improvements. And few are also aware of safer, the safer Whitehall initiative. And so, think about the jump in moving in the right direction. Think about the jump in moving in the right direction you would have if the percentage of folks who are aware was high. So you managed to achieve stellar gains in that one leading indicator, even without a lot of knowledge, a lot of information about some of the things that you're doing. So this should be an incentive to spread the word. Among residents aware of the plans for Norton Crossing, most have positive impressions. And over half, the residents favor the city's approach to acquiring blighted and nuisance properties for redevelopment. Nearly everyone else was unable to comment, not a lot of negative there. And finally, Facebook has become the top source of news and information about Whitehall, replacing the print edition of This Week and Whitehall News. Questions? And I typically just stand here until someone asks me, even if it takes like all night.
So, go ahead.
I was gonna say, if somebody picked up the phone and didn't speak English, did you guys have translators or not? If someone picked up the phone and did not speak English, did you have translators available when doing the survey?
We did not, but we really didn't encounter that.
You didn't encounter that?
The only thing I would just say, just so everyone's aware, we are going to take Mr. Shapristine's presentation. It'll be available not on our website, but per the recommendation, we'll probably push it out on our Facebook tomorrow. And so we will have that available for people to view in the public. And then one of the things that I failed to mention kind of at the beginning, could you give a little bit, just a brief history kind of on your, you know, your experience and your firm's experience?
Your qualifications.
So it hardly seems possible, but I've been doing this on my own for thirty-eight years. I went to Ohio State, got a PhD in political science, flipped in Yellow Pages, under P, not much, and a way of jobs for political scientists. So in nineteen eighty, I started a firm, in part because doing this kind of work is a way to learn how the world works and get paid for it. So it's really fun. And as a consequence of doing it for so long, we've done these kinds of surveys for Dublin and for New Albany and for Hilliard and for Grove City. And there are things that you can compare over time. And you notice there are some similarities and some differences. The demographics in your community are very different from the demographics in Whitehall. And there are still some similarities with respect to how the, um, how the results lay out. What's also interesting is, in nineteen eighty when I started, we needed four numbers to complete each interview, four telephone numbers. And you saw that now it was twenty-five to one. And that is sort of an existential threat to the industry because what happens is, as you can imagine, it's much more costly to be dialing twenty-five numbers for every interview than it is to be dialing four. But over the years, we have developed strategies to try to keep people on the phones. And then we anticipate a lot of bilingual residents. Then we do have those capabilities in multiple languages.
The random three hundred and fifty people that you guys polled or surveyed, were they in different areas? So you just took numbers and randomly started calling numbers?
So you take all the numbers that you can get from the community and you stir them in the pot and you essentially pick them out randomly. If you remember the very first, one of my very first slides that had the distribution across the boards, and the distribution of the sample matched the, or the precincts matched the precincts with that a percentage point or two. So, the most robust part of the process is sampling. The difference between doing a hundred interviews and five hundred interviews is a couple of percentage points difference. The real source of error in survey research is question wording. And if you're thinking, "Boy, three hundred and fifty interviews isn't a whole lot of data." Sampling error for the three hundred and fifty, as I said, plus or minus five point one percentage points. But if we were doing the survey not in Whitehall, but in all of Ohio, the sampling error would be the same. Because sampling error is based on the size of the sample, not on the size of the population. So a reason for doing more than three hundred and fifty is if you said, "Well, tell me with more confidence about women in a certain age group." Well, then you're down to a small number and then your sampling error starts to increase. But three fifty, in a community like this, sometimes it's hard to do more than three hundred and fifty. The same thing with New Albany. We can barely squeak out three hundred and fifty interviews because it's hard to get phone numbers, people are reluctant to participate. So for this community, that's probably about the most you could do economically.
I'm curious as to, how do you think the increase in the use of Facebook and social media in general has affected this type of a survey like this? Do you think that that, I like what your thoughts are on that. Do you think that that's had an impact on your ability to contact people? Are people willing to participate, willing to answer their phone for a phone number that they don't recognize where? I mean, when I was growing up, it was a phone, right? It was a fight to get to the phone to see who could answer it because I want to talk to the person on the other end, but it's not like that anymore.
No, it's much tougher. Whether it's had an impact, whether social media has had an impact, my bet is it has an impact. I'll give you an example. So in New Albany, we worked on a school, it's a small community. So as soon as we were on the phone, everybody was on social media saying, "Oh, there's a survey." And, you know, trying to steer opinions one way or the other. But a community attitude survey is pretty generic. It's not like there's a point of view expressed by it. We're not asking for like how someone's going to vote. So I'm not sure it's had much of an impact. But I will say that since most of our interviews are on cellphones. So in the old days, when we had landlines, out of every ten interviews we completed, seven were with women. If you, seven women picked up the phone. And why was that? And I'm not endorsing this, but it was like a cultural thing. "I need to get the phone." Now, I've never said that. And my dad's never said that. And my grandfather's never said that. But it was pretty common. And so because of that, you would have to go through the... And so because of that, you would have to go through this whole thing. How many adults in your house over eighteen? Who's having the next birthday? You know, it's some random method. And then really older people would say, oh, we've already had her birthdays. So it was really complicated. But the cellphone has changed that. The cellphone eliminated the notion of households in survey research because they're tied to individuals. So if we're working from a registered voter list, then we want Fred Smith and we dialed that number. It's a high probability Fred Smith will answer. Or if anybody answers, it will be him as opposed to, I mean, in a household, it could be mom and dad and grandpa and grandma living there and a boomerang child. So you have a lot of potential voters or residents. But with the cellphone, what is nice about it is that it eliminates that problem.
Who else has a question?
Another question, more of a comment, on the difference between bad news and bad services. That struck me as really interesting because they're, and it being tied to the education or a person's education. So I could, I mean, I can understand, people oftentimes don't like bad news. So they say, when they get bad news, the service is horrible or the service was bad. So I can understand that. And the other thing was reading and hearing, but not personally impacted. So that, does Facebook, Facebook have a lot to do with what people read and hear, which will then dictate how they're impacted or how they feel about the issue?
So here's the beauty of this. In the old days, when there was a lot of print communication, you could ask the press to print something, but you couldn't demand it. I mean, you, you had little control. But you can be, your access to Facebook is as great as the communities. So you can counter what other folks, what folks might read on Facebook with your own messaging. And that's what's so important. That's why the tipping of the scale for on print, the Facebook, is sort of revolutionary, I think, in the way cities communicate. Because you have control, not only of the content, but of the frequency. And it's also cost effective. So that's a, yeah, that's a great thing.
But you don't have control over whether somebody has good service or bad service. Because bad service is on Facebook and from what I'm taking, from what you two are saying, is whether or not you agree with the person. And so if you don't hear what you want to hear, you got bad service.
Yeah, no, that's.
You didn't get the answer you wanted.
Yeah.
Right.
So you got bad service.
That's my point. Now, that's not always true. I mean, there is bad service. We've all encountered that. But it's not, but my point is it's not always true.
That's right.
So we should take with a grain of salt. We should at least be sensitive to the difference between bad service and bad news. But it's not to say it's always bad news. Good, sometimes.
Who else?
Well, Mr. President, if there's no other questions, I want to thank Mr. Saperstein for coming today and presenting, you know, what the results of this attitude survey were. Obviously, there's a lot of good information for us to use to inform, you know, future decisions and future directions. But again, I want to thank him and his firm for the work on this. And as I mentioned, the full results will be on our website and we'll post this PowerPoint to our Facebook so that anyone who didn't get an opportunity to see this or hear the complete presentation will be able to, be able to look at it. So again, want to, want to thank you for joining us this evening.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have one more comment. If you call my house nine times out of ten, I'll be the one that answers the phone.
I thought you were gonna say, if I called your house, you wouldn't talk to me.
No, no. My wife, my wife doesn't answer the phone. It's usually me.
So the hope is that in another house, there's a wife who answers the phone all the time and a husband who says, I won't. And you sort of hope that the rule of large numbers, the law of large numbers, that those differences balance out. And there's some evidence that suggests that that's true, that suggests that the folks who don't answer are randomly distributed. And if you look at how similar the 2016 data and the 2018 data are, that can't be just like craziness, random numbers that people are, you know, random answers. You can't, this is two independent groups of three hundred and fifty people coming up where you wouldn't expect change with numbers that are almost identical over a two-year period. That's to me, and for four decades of doing this, still magic.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Marty. Appreciate it.
All right, well, we'll move on with our agenda. It's our first opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you will have up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
I hope the cameras didn't pick up the cracking as I stood up. Gerald Dixon, thirty eight seventy seven Donny Street. I didn't want to ask my two questions when Mr. Saperstein was here because I don't know that there are particularly questions for Mr. Saperstein. And I know that you say, you know, like question-answer sessions. But certainly all of you have a poll council and certainly any of the administration, I think, could answer the question, questions, two of them. How much of the taxpayer's money did this cost? And what is its end game? What is its point? Why did we do this? Please, thank you.
I believe the total cost was approximately twenty thousand dollars. And we, the end game is that we want to know from our citizens through an unbiased source about what the city needs to focus on to better itself, what we're doing good now, what we can do better, and, you know, what are our flaws that we need to work on. And we can really only get this type of information through an unbiased professional, I think, that can go out and get this information. We know that he's worked with other cities as well and we were very, you know, impressed by what happens. And also you can see the trends that go on in your city when you keep on doing this over years to see if what you're doing is working. What type of statistical information, factual information that can show a trend that's working or not working? So basically, that's why we do it. We want to make sure that we use stats and facts in order to serve our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you for the answer. Please state your name and address for the record.
Carol McIntosh, one forty Rita Court. I have a few questions going back to 2010 when we raised the income tax. Anybody remember that? Half percent?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There was a Whitehall Citizens for Inform Voting that campaigned on, we pass the income tax to avoid having an assessment from Columbus Public Water. Okay, was that regarding the sanitary sewer overflow, the EPA finding? Or was that to satisfy just the storm drainage, overflow, that kind of thing? Or?
The, the city pays actually for the assessment for sewer issues regarding what Columbus has put on. The city pays that.
Okay. I'm asking about that specific income tax.
Right.
It was, it was, I don't want to say advertising, I'm in a loss for a better word.
We, we are.
But it was for infrastructure repair for.
Yes.
The sewage, okay. So I guess, is this the appropriate place to ask for records, public records request?
You can send that? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I have several. If you read this, there's, there's a lot in this and I've got a lot of questions about that. Were the, all the board members or the, not board members, but council members made aware of, is this something that all council members should know about? This EPA finding?
I, I think.
And the sewage issue?
So I, I think the majority of city council, I don't know if I've had a specific conversation with it, with Councilwoman Elmore or Councilwoman Peck. I think it's well documented that the city has a, I believe it's a fifteen-year plan to comply and do a number of projects that.
Yeah, I asked my, my councilman and he didn't have any information about it. So that's why I'm asking and that's why I'm here, is to ask the questions because I just get an answer.
That's fine. I mean, again, I think, I think this administration and I believe the previous administration talked about, I wasn't the service director at the time, so I can't speak specifically to how that information was made aware or made public to not only city council, but the public. But we certainly, I'm sure city council had, I can't swear to it.
Well, it took me a long time to figure out. I, I spent a lot of time trying to find out why, what the details were around that.
Well, that's fine.
So my question is, is that half percent set aside for that? No, it just goes to the general fund?
No, not, not all of it.
I mean, there are certain percentages that come off of the general fund, but it wasn't.
That was for water sewer improvement and other general uses.
Correct. When the vote was on the ballot, I think to the point you're making, when the vote was on the ballot, it did not dictate that a certain percentage of that go into a certain fund. City council.
Well, I think most of the people that I knew thought that it was just for that. So that's okay. That answered my question.
I don't think so, but that's fine.
And I'll ask some others. And I want to be the amen corner for streets and roads. It is, I got this rescue dog a year ago, which I don't know why I did that now. He is never happy unless we take a walk. So I walk all over the city of Whitehall. And it's depressing to look at the condition of the streets and the curbs. There are handicap access ramps, they're brand new. They're overgrown, they need to be mowed. And they're just poorly kept. It's, it's just a bad picture. It makes the city look like what people think. It's run down, broken down. And if, our goal is to attract younger residents, they aren't going to want to live on those streets. The outside looks, the perimeter looks great. It's beautiful. I mean, there's tons of improvement. People compliment, you know, people that have visited me compliment the perimeter, but when you come in, it's, oh my God, why do you live here? The, my curb has been crumbling, 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 but that's all over the city. At some point, we have to make that a priority to make it attractive for people to want to live on those streets. Clean it up, I mean, the street sweeper, something, anything. So, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else would like to come forward this time? All right, we'll move on with our agenda and that will be, next we have our standing committee reports. We'll begin with the administration and financial management, Chairperson Baylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and financial management did meet last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file and we plan to meet again next Tuesday sometime after six-thirty right here in the back room.
All right, thank you, sir. Community and elder advocacy, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and elder advocacy met last Tuesday. We have no pending legislation. We will meet again next Tuesday in the back around six-thirty. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have community standards and enforcement. That's Chairperson Rodriguez. Unfortunately, due to a heavy workload because of the recent hurricane, he's unable to attend the meeting this evening. But that committee did meet last Tuesday and their minutes are on file in the council offices. You'll also meet again next Tuesday sometime after two, or after six-thirty. Well, it'd be after two-thirty also. All right, next we have economic development. That's Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic development also met last Tuesday. We have no pending legislation this evening and our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next week sometime after six-thirty in the back.
Okay, thank you. Infrastructure maintenance and services, Chairperson Hatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure maintenance and services met last Tuesday in the back. We have no pending legislation or drafts. We will meet next Tuesday in the back sometime after six-thirty.
All right, thank you. Public safety, Chairperson Condonson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public safety met last week. Our minutes are on file and we'll meet again in the back sometime after six-thirty next week.
All right, thank you. Next, we have parks and recreation, Chairperson Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and recreation also met last week. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next week far after six-thirty in the back, since I'm last.
Thank you, sir. Next, those are all the standing committee reports for this evening. Next, we have our officials' reports and we'll begin with our mayor, Ms. Kim MacArthur.
Yes, I would like to say thank you all for coming this evening and I would like to have favorable consideration of ordinances ninety-six, ninety-eight and ninety-nine. And just want to say that with the plan, I believe the ballot language was, as I'm answering, Ms. McIntosh, was for water and sewer improvement as well as any other general uses that are needed by the city.
I have, I have it, yeah.
Okay. All right. And then also, every year as I do my budget, you will see infrastructure projects and you will see some that come out of the water and sewer improvement fund. And also, you will be passing an ordinance, an add-on for twenty-seven thousand dollars this evening. That has to do with design for EPA upgrades for next year. That will be, we hope to bid out in January. Thank you.
And there, correct me if I'm wrong, but weren't there four funds that we created at that time, not only for sewer, but for equipment?
Yeah.
There were four separate funds that we created.
Yeah, it was about that.
Each one has a particular amount of money that's contributed.
We have a certain amount of money that goes into that, those, yes.
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 Now, I can't remember what all four of them are.
We have so many funds now.
But that was what part of the money?
Well, was any of it for the storm drains? Because my yard has flooded for, ever since I've lived there. My son, it's so, so high that it, one of, it goes, one of the seats on Chevy S ten. So anytime there's been having rain, he had to pull into the driveway. It is, the kids swim, play in it, there is no drainage there. And I really thought that that was part of what that tax money was for, that income tax increase.
I don't believe it was for yards for sure.
No, no, ours, the storm, there's no drainage.
Okay.
You mean you had no storm sewers on your street, is that what you're saying?
We have them, they just don't function properly.
Unfortunately, I, I mean, we can look at those, but I, I think all of those have been looked at and graded within the past two years because that's, that's what the street department does. But many times, Carol, when there's a hard rain coming down, unfortunately, the city of Columbus will divert water to different areas and that overloads everybody's storm sewers. So, I mean, it just depends on the diversion, but we can talk more about that later.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
And always keep in mind, there's hardly a storm sewer around that will withstand an inch of raining in thirty minutes.
I did that.
You know, everybody's backs up.
I've seen a lot of, I've seen a lot of rain in the years that I've lived there.
Me too. All right, next up, we have our city attorney, Mr. Michael Biffen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, thank you everyone for coming out this evening. From the city attorney's office, I just want to report on the swap meet that we had on October the thirteenth. Just so that you know, October, not only with it being Breast Cancer Awareness Month, it is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And one of the things that my office has intended to tackle is getting out the information as it relates to domestic violence in an effort to educate the public so that individuals that are involved in intimate partner or domestic violence matters feel safe and feel comfortable coming to our office for help. The National Coalition Against Domestic Violence roughly estimates that nearly seventy percent of all domestic violence cases nationally go unreported in the United States. Now, my office experiences and every office around the city experiences that out of the thirty percent that do report, once we get the report, about thirty percent of those individuals don't want to proceed or don't want to go forward with their case because of a myriad of issues. Either they have, they have this longstanding relationship with the person, they have issues as it relates to trust of the. They have issues as it relates to trust of the agency that's supposed to help them. They don't get the proper service as it relates to these matters. They feel victimized by law enforcement. They feel victimized by the attorneys that are prosecuting the cases. And it's one of the things in my administration that I would like the city as well as the public and any member who is, who is watching Facebook and any person that's here today to know that our office is a safe place. Our law enforcement will vigorously go after the individuals. You are safe when you give us the statement and we will do everything that we can to protect you once you come forward. We had the swap meet. I was apprehensive about it just because it was a giveaway. I'd like to thank council member Morrison, council member Heck for coming. I'll tell you, your, your donation, council member Morrison, that was a big rage. There were a couple of people that, that wanted that toaster oven, so I thank you for bringing that out. And it was just, and even Chief Crispin brought out items. But it was one of those things that as individuals came to get a free item, they received a bag from my office with, with information as it relates to domestic violence, information as it relates to where they can go for resources as it relates to domestic violence. And they were happy to receive that information. It wasn't forced upon them. And there were individuals that took me off to the side that said, "Thank you for this. I, I now have information and I would like to help a person that I know that's going through this and this has helped me do that." And if, for that one person, that event was worth it. So, I'd like to thank you, members of council, you mayor Mager for, for sparking the idea and at least pushing me to go in that direction because it was unconventional. But I would like to thank mostly the city of Whitehall for turning out and coming out to this event. I look to grow it into something really special next year. So, I would just like to thank everyone for their attention in that matter.
All right, thank you, sir. Next up, we have our director of development and public service, Mr. Zach Wood.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just add, would love to sit down with Ms. McIntosh and get her whatever information that she's looking for. But just to give a frame of reference, we are in the midst of a fifteen-year, three-point-five-million-dollar project to comply with EPA requirements as it relates to our sanitary system. That will have an impact on some of the flooding that occurs for our storm sewers in part because as an example for part of this project is to keep out storm water out of our sanitary lines and to keep sanitary out of our storm lines. So, doing things like replacing the manhole covers with ones that don't allow water to get in and making sure that we're separating completely our storm lines with our sanitary lines. That is not to say that there is a magic bullet for storm water. And as it's been mentioned before, we have had, I think this year, I don't have the data in front of me, but I think we've had more higher rain events than normal.
Yeah, I'm saying from, from day one, yeah. It's not, it's not unique to-
You're not, you're not wrong. You are absolutely not wrong. I grew up on Mayflower and right there at the bend where there's a storm sewer, that, that has, and heavy rains, that floods. You're not wrong. There's also not great solutions. Increasing the size of our sanitary lines throughout the city is not financially feasible. It's just not. That's not to say that there aren't things we can do to mitigate it and we are working on those. Again, this three-point-five-million-dollar project will help in that. If you look at what we've done, like on Etna Road when we did that reconstruction with the bio basins and the rain gardens, that helped mitigate some of the flooding that folks over in that area know happened on Etna when it rained hard. That is a way to do it. City of Columbus, I think, has been, although I would tweak how they've done it, I think has been a leader in that area to try to divert water out of the storm system so that it can accommodate more. It's something that we're looking at to try to do more of. But again, there's, there's not much. Short of major road improvements that increase the size of our storm, it's very difficult. When we looked at Etna Road as an example, there was a thought process to increasing the size of the storm pipe down Etna Road to accommodate more water. The problem is it feeds into Hamilton Road, which feeds into Columbus. And so, it, it, you can increase the size all you want of the pipe that's on Etna, but if you don't increase the size where it goes downstream, if you don't increase its ability to get into Columbus faster, there's not a whole lot we can do. When we did Hamilton Road, North Hamilton Road, we had the same conversation about increasing the size of the storm there by the railroad overpass because we know in heavy rains, it can also back up with water. Unless we got Columbus to agree or we paid for to increase the size of the storm sewer that then fed over to Big Walnut Creek by the airport golf course, there's literally no bigger pipe we could put in that would have diverted water there. My point is, I, I certainly have it to give you any information you want. I'll sit down, talk to you and bring in our civil engineer to, to talk more in depth because he's the expert more than me. Your, your concerns are very well-founded and we're trying to do things to mitigate those problems. But this is a complex and complicated issue that doesn't have a magic bullet or, or an easy fix. But it's something that my office deals with. Every time it rains, I talk to residents. And you're, you're not wrong. Again, having grown up on Mayflower, I know exactly what you're talking about. I can't tell you how many times my parents chased me out of those high waters there. Every time that it rained, we'd go wading indoor.
Well, from Donie down to Boudoir Court.
Absolutely.
Everything just rolls down in from Donie. It doesn't-
No, you're-
Whatever it does, it is a heavy rain, but there are moderate rains that flush up into my yard.
Absolutely. And again, you're, you're not wrong and those are things that we're trying to alleviate and mitigate. But again, there's no, there's no silver bullet, but that's why, you know, again, I'm happy to sit down with you. It's a focus of mine, I can tell you, that we are always looking to be more efficient and effective with the dollars we get. It's part of the reason we apply for so many grants to try to maximize our dollars, knowing that on an average year, we get about seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for roadwork. We have approximately a hundred-and-forty-seven mile, lane miles of roadway in Whitehall. We strength, we send the street sweeper out twice a month to do, to do the city. And so, we're, we're doing the best that we can to be more efficient with our labor.
They don't want to be inside.
They, they- Well, they do. I mean, so I, I, I'm not going to let that go unchallenged. I mean, they do. And we don't just keep the street sweeper on Broad, Hamilton, and Main. It's in the neighborhoods twice a month. So, we are, we are absolutely trying to, again, I think there is an importance to the main corridors. That's, yeah, that's absolute, but we also are also focused on trying to maximize all of the paving that we do. So, if you think about the paving that we did in two thousand and eighteen, the only streets that we paved were neighborhood streets. The budget I proposed to the mayor only paves residential streets in neighborhoods like yours and others. This year, we did all of the Fairway Oaks neighborhood except for Fairway Oaks Drive that comes out to Fairway. And it does. And you're right, we need to do more.
And that's more attractive and that brings a better resident, you know, more homeowners that do-
You're not wrong. You're, you're absolutely not wrong and that's what we're working at every day to get better at and to do more of. And, you know, doing things like, for the first time ever, we accessed county permissive funds. Sorry for going on so long. Normally, I don't talk this long. For county permissive funds to get, everyone got the joke, to get more money so that we, so that our street crews could do curb and gutter or curb work and sidewalk work on Broad Street so we didn't have to use city general fund and be able to free up those funds to do paving inside the city. We are absolutely working to get every nickel we can out of the budget to do more paving and more, more curb and gutter and, and that's what our focus in the public service department is. But again, happy to sit down with you at any time and, and hear what questions you might have and what answers we can provide. So, Mr. President, I thank you for indulging me for that.
All right. Brings us to our public, our director of public safety, Mr. Van Groot.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have an official report, but I would want to invite, we're welcoming two firefighters to our staff tomorrow, this morning at one o'clock. And also, in a timely manner with the results, the gentleman up here was talking about, we do have safer Whitehall initiative tomorrow at six P.M. So, you all were invited and Facebook is invited because I saw that there wasn't a whole lot of participation from the survey we had. And Chief Crispin will hold that meeting at New Life Church. And he will discuss some of the initiatives that he has in place that's already showing effects and it was even on the results there. So, be there at six o'clock tomorrow night.
What's the address?
And it comes out Thursday?
Isn't it Thursday?
Thursday, Thursday.
Okay. Tomorrow, I'll just ask her.
And what's that address?
That's, uh-
On Yearling Road.
Yearling Road, right down, four, four something.
Okay. Kind of Yearling and-
Yeah, it does, every side.
About three or four times a year.
Yeah, it's once a quarter.
Yeah, cool. All right, thank you, sir. Next, we have our treasurer, Mr. Steve Quinzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report tonight, but I would, however, like to publicly commend Deputy Chief Metapace Whitehall Fire Department for a very positive spotlight on NBC Nightly News the other night. It was very well done. He did his proud.
All right, thank you, sir. Well, since our last meeting, we've received the following officials' reports in the council office. We have the auditor's expense report for September two thousand and eighteen, the auditor's bank report for September two thousand and eighteen, the auditor's statement of cash position report for two thousand, for September two thousand and eighteen, along with the auditor's revenue report for September two thousand and eighteen. We've also received the treasurer's investment report for September two thousand and eighteen along with the treasurer's activity by fund report for September two thousand and eighteen, and finally, the treasurer's fund reconciliation report for September two thousand and eighteen. Those are all the community, or all the reports we have received. We have not received any communicate, communications, petitions, or claims since the agenda was prepared this evening from our, including from our last meeting. So, at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Thomas to please call the roll on whether each member of council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation.
Bailey.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
All right, we'll begin our ordinances and resolutions for the evening as usual. We will begin with third reading. And first up, we have ordinance ninety twenty eighteen, amending zoning map attached to chapter one-one-two-two of the nineteen-seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and is subsequently amended, allowing a planned department district development plan on property located at five forty South Hamilton Road, parcel number zero-nine-zero-zero-zero-one-six-two-three, property owned by Hamilton Crossings LLC.
Mr. President, if I may make some comments on this ordinance. Council was presented with a presentation on this a few weeks back prior to the planning commission's presentation. And we were to receive a presentation on this prior to voting on this. We have not received that presentation. And there was many unanswered questions that council had at that time. The minutes from the planning commission, I see they have approved it, but there's not a whole lot of detail in here. They had a virtual walkthrough and different presentations in which council has not seen. And on that basis, I would move to table.
Mr. President-
Ordinance ninety.
If I could-
I'm not done, sir.
Okay.
I would move to table ordinance ninety twenty eighteen until such time we have that presentation before us.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. President, before you call the roll, if I could please, the applicant is here intending to make that presentation this evening, which is what, if was not communicated, I thought we had communicated, that they intended to come back at the third reading and make, and make a presentation. So, if that was not communicated properly, I apologize, but the applicant is here intending to do that presentation this evening.
There's nothing on the agenda indicating that?
No, sir. I believe that our intent was to do it as part of the third reading. I apologize, sir. They actually are, their, this is their laptop hooked up to the, the screen this evening. And again, I apologize for that misunder, that miscommunication and misunderstanding. The applicant and the architect and Homeport are here today to do that presentation. I, again, I will take full responsibility for that. My apologies. We haven't fully intended for Homeport to make that presentation this evening.
I was under the impression myself, in fact, I spoke to someone and said I hope we will have the information before it comes up for a vote, and I was told that we would. And I, I think the concern is that people don't have enough time to take a look at it to make a decision. I'm not saying that anybody is opposed to it. I'm just saying that I think that people would be more comfortable if they had more time for discussion. At any rate, there is a motion on the floor. And if no one withdraws a motion, the motion will have, will be voted on.
I'm willing to withdraw. I second if we're, if we're going to have a presentation tonight.
Yes, ma'am. Our intent was to do that right now at the, before the vote on the third, for the third reading to answer those questions.
I would prefer to table it so we could discuss it next week and commit it. That was my purpose here.
Correct.
I mean, nobody has time to really take in the presentation and think about the presentation as to pros or cons or whatever. I'm not saying I'm against the project. I'm saying that it's a very short period of time for us to consider something of this nature.
If I could, Mr. President, the, the only thing I would say to Councilman Morrison is maybe it would be appropriate to hear the presentation, ask those questions, and then the full council could, you could still make that same motion, Mr. Morrison. It could, it could get a second. Council could then vote at that time whether to table it. But maybe we could have the applicant do the presentation, answer the questions. And if council still thinks they need additional time to evaluate the proposal, I don't think we would be opposed to having a two-week table. I just think maybe we have the presentation that the applicant's here for.
All right, so-
I have no objections to seeing the presentation. I just don't wish to-
At this time, would you withdraw your motion?
I will.
Okay, all right. So, if they want to give a presentation, we will hear the presentation. And then you will have the opportunity to make that motion again, should you choose or whatever.
Okay, agree.
So, with that, I'll reintroduce the city council, Homeport, Justin from Homeport and Carrick, who's the architect. And I know Joe Ryan from our office also has some additional information and I'll open it over to them.
Well, good evening, Mr. President and members of council. My name is Justin. That's our project manager, something's on board. And wanted to just give this presentation today to give a little bit more insight about what we're planning to do. Back in two thousand and fourteen, we had prepared our existing Hamilton Crossing Homes project, which is a senior housing project for affordable housing tax credits, excuse me. And we had won courses, tax credits in that application and proceeded with construction of a sixty-four unit, if I believe that number is correct, senior housing project that is on Etna and Hamilton Road. And since then, as all of you are aware, that the project has been completed and is fully occupied. And we are looking at starting a new project directly to the south on some residual land. That's a part of the existing project. Back when we had, had presented the project, it was intended that this, this phase that we're showing here, that's just to the, just below the red dashed line there, would be a market rate project. And that is still the intent today. The, the change, however, that has occurred is, is we now have a total of forty units on this property instead of the original twenty. on this property instead of the original twenty units that we were proposing initially. What has led to that change was basically a, a change in some of the economics and what's going on now with the market and the construction industry as a whole. So construction costs have increased fairly significantly, and so because of this increase in construction costs, it is no longer feasible to just provide twenty units on a project on, on this piece of land. So we are proposing that a forty-unit project be built, and this would consist of three buildings, sixteen units, and what's being referred to as Building A, so there's two Building As on the site, and then eight units, which is Building B, which is in the center of the site there. So in order to help reduce the impact of the development with the increase in density, we have created a two-story breezeway-style type product, a lower height than the existing Hamilton Crossing project at three stories, in efforts to tie that a little bit into the smaller scale of the, of the properties to the south. We've also located the buildings as close as we can to the north, or shifted them as close as we can to the proposed newer property line. So that gives or increases the distance between the neighbors to the south. So Carrick's here, and he can talk a little bit more about some of the details of the project and the intent of their design.
Hi there. As Justin said, we focused, knowing that there would be, that there is some potential concerns about, concerns about the increase in density, we wanted to focus the density of buildings as far away from the south property line as possible. The intent behind this is, is to break up the massing, as well as provide a circulation pattern that provides some relief between the south properties and the buildings that we're proposing. As you can see, the, the new drive provides for parking for the residents. Headlights will be turning into our property and not, not away from the property in order to mitigate any light pollution that could have come from cars and traffic. As we approach the eastern side of the property, we do have ten garage spaces in a single building that serve to provide some screening, as well as the garage. I can, you can see that, these are aerial views. Etna is up here. The proposed building, here is the existing Hamilton Crossing Senior Housing Facility. The three buildings that we're proposing here are behind that. There's a fairly significant existing vegetation line along the south property line that provides quite a bit of screening from the properties to the south. Note also that there is a piece of property that takes up most, the majority of the length of that southern property line, that is owned by the multifamily property to the west of what we're developing. The single-family homes that are further to the east all have privacy fences, and there's quite a bit of existing vegetation that will remain protected during construction and obviously the development of the property. This is just intended to show what's existing there. When we spoke the first time, there were some questions from the planning commission. I can zoom in if you need me to.
I can walk over and look.
Okay. There were some questions that were discussed at the planning commission meeting about the, about the existing vegetation, the screening, the density, things like that. We discussed a little bit of the planning commission, the species of what is there, and it is primarily, you know, native underbrush. It's, there, there is some.
Is it native or is it invasive?
I'm not, I'm not a plant species expert, but by my observation, there is some of the invasive Japanese honey locusts there.
Honey.
Honey suckle, sorry. But there are, there is quite a bit of, of flowering and fruiting underbrush there, which, which would lead me to believe that it's more, more native and not invasive.
You're going to lead me to believe that it's more undesirable, that is an undesirable plant. The damage, and it's very invasive.
However, it could still be native.
No, it's not native. It is not native. It is from Japan.
And it's everywhere.
And it is very, very invasive.
All over southeast Ohio.
It's all over everywhere. Okay, go ahead.
But if I could, again, whether it's invasive, native, or somewhere in between, again, these pictures are, are here to, to show just how much screening is already in place between the south property line and properties that are to the south of it. Carrick, if you go back one slide, please, I'm sorry. If you go back one more, again, sorry, again. Yep, here we are. The distance for Building A to the left, the distance from that building to the property line is approximately sixty feet. I think you all have a site map that actually shows what the actual dimension is. Sixty feet from the building to the property line, and then from, before you get to the houses to the east, it's an additional approximately fifty or sixty feet from that property line to the property line of the single-family homes. So in this area, from the building to the single-family homes property line, is approximately a hundred feet, hundred and twenty feet. I don't have the site plan from me, but approximately that. As you get further to the east, where there are the four or five single-family homes, where that kind of, I'll call it the buffer lot, don't exist, what, go back to the pictures, please, Carrick. What these pictures show is in that area, the screening is significant, the existing screening, and that the garage building will also provide an additional amount of screening from the residential, the proposed residential units to the sing, the back of the single-family homes. So again, I, I just want to walk through these couple slides, just to show, again, how much screening is already there, how much buffer there is between this property line and the single-family homes. And when that gets shorter, you can see the increase in the screening, and then the, the garages that are being proposed, the one garage building that'll have ten garages, will provide that additional amount of screening.
By my comment, the, the, the back portion of that property is elevated, is a higher elevation than is the residential housing there, and the screening that is there right now, you're showing nice leaves on it. That's going to go away in the wintertime, and you're not going to have near the screening there year-round.
Are you talking about to the east, sir?
To the south.
Well, I understand the whole thing's to the south. I'm talking about, you're talking about the eastern portion or the western portion, sir?
It would be the.
Like in the picture where I can see the.
It would be the west.
Where the additional lot is.
Yeah. The opposite side of where the garage, the garages are going to be, which is the west side.
Okay. So I just want to make sure. So I think what the applicant has expressed, I believe they talked about it the last time they were here, but I believe that they have committed to doing some level of mounding in the amount, in the area between the, the edge of the drive aisle, parking there, and the property lines, to do some row, some, some bit of mounding to bring up the elevation there, and then to do, I think they would commit to doing.
I have quickly looked through this, and I see the only screening is an existing chain link fence and dense vegetation. It says nothing about.
So again.
Mounding or anything of that nature. So that should have been indicated on, on these drawings.
We discussed this a little bit at the planning commission meeting.
And we discussed it when.
Yeah.
We met in council prior to this.
Mr. Ryan and I visited the site to take the pictures that we discussed here, and you can see that there is quite a bit of grade change on the south side of this property as we move even further south, likely due to the construction activities of the Hamilton Crossing building. Mounding in this location will likely destroy the existing vegetation. So I, if the desire is that we provide a screen, I, I, my personal opinion, just from being out there, is that the vegetation is fairly woody. There are fairly significantly sized trunks of, of lower trees right along the fence line. It's, it's a fairly significant, I mean, if you walk it, it's a fairly significant.
I've been over there, and that's why I know that the elevation is higher than the residential housing behind it, and that vegetation's not there twelve months out of the year for the screening.
I don't know what further discussion there is to have. I mean, we, we've located buildings on the site in order to mitigate the headlights that won't be turning. I mean, obviously, there's travel, but the, the amount of headlights that would be facing south are going to be limited.
Well, they'll all be facing south as they enter the property.
Yes.
So it's a hazard, so.
Yeah.
Unless they all back in.
Are you coming in from the east? I know that question was asked on the floor, and you really didn't say yes or no, it hadn't been confirmed. The construction personnel, will they enter the east?
I don't know if we really identified the construction pattern of the project as of yet.
Yeah, that's right. As we get into some more details and further discussions with our general contractor, we certainly explore, you know, the best method to access the site, and of course, you know, work with the city to, to have a help in terms of creating the best construction environment during that period of time.
So then I'm going to assume that the next question was asked, because we hadn't, we have not spoken with any of the school system personnel? Because there's a school really close when you're, you're coming in from the east as well.
We have not spoken to any of the schools specifically with respect to, to this project. Of course, we did, you know, for the existing Hamilton Crossing project, but not specifically with this one yet. Oh, we certainly be, we will be so.
Did you say all the homes had a privacy fencing on the back?
Most of the homes along the western half of the property, they do actually have privacy fencing on the opposite side of the, of the ocean space. So, and between the, between the density of the existing vegetation, as well as the privacy fencing that exists along their property line.
How, how many feet is between the property line and the privacy fencing? How, how much land is that? I'm just curious.
I believe it's about forty feet.
Okay.
If you, if the council references my staff before I did measure this, so the back block line of those privacy fences to the southern building elevation is a hundred and twenty-five feet. And for reference, the minimum boundary of the northern crossing project between that southern building elevation at its closest point to the back block line of the St. Francis Homes is only about sixty feet, just for comparison. That's about double. And then when we get closer, that's why we added the garage, additional screen, because they didn't have that additional footage there.
Who is the owner of that property?
The owner of that adjacent buffer lot? Yeah. It's owned by the, it's part of the apartments that face Hamilton Road, adjacent to the site.
Would that lot ever be open for development? Or is that lot, is that a developable? Could that lot, could somebody build on that lot? That's what. I'm just asking, I'm curious.
Um, I, I would have to, I don't know off the top of my head what our requirements are for setback, but hypothetically, I mean, again, if they met the setback requirements for, I also don't know what that property is owned, I assume it's probably his own apartment, right? It's part of the other apartment. So.
Also for the street.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, to your point, Councilman Graham, I, I don't know if they could extend the parking lot that's, you know, there to the south of those buildings further up. I, I don't know. We have to, I hate to, to, to give my best Supreme Court reference, I can't speak on that. Right.
Not sure.
I also don't think, again, I had a quick sidebar with the applicant, I also don't think that the applicant, if council so desires, I don't know that the applicant wouldn't commit to putting in a privacy fence between the garages all the way down that remaining property line to where those apartments are. I don't, the applicant isn't, the applicant would agree to that if that, if council so deemed that as a condition as well. I don't think it's necessary where the garages are. I think that would be redundant, but certainly from the garages west along that property line, if the goal was screening, I don't know if that would affect vegetation. That's something that the applicant could look at, but I certainly think they would be willing to put in, you know, a six-foot privacy fence along that property line.
And it is an existing six-foot chain link fence.
Correct.
And that would be entered in the piece of legislation.
We could certainly amend the legislation to stipulate any requirements or any other conditions.
I would think that if those drivelines in the turns affect the housing, that maybe some kind of architectural fencing could be put just in that little segment there to block that, the, the lights and stuff.
Sure. Where the, where the lights are, are, where the vehicular traffic is moving south.
Carrick, will you go back to the site plan?
So almost it has to be built and then see what.
Yeah.
Is there.
We're talking about this area, right? Where you'd have vehicular traffic coming south, and then that could lead to headlights.
Yeah, so if that situation exists, then perhaps it could be mitigated with some kind of deperative fencing panel of some sort.
Well, and that, that area, more than any of the other areas along that property line, could be, could include evergreen screening.
Good point.
In addition to any.
Is that what, excuse me, is that one-way traffic through there, or are they going to be able to go?
It's intended to be two-way.
And if I could, just to make sure that I understand the point, just so we're all clear, the idea would be, in your opinion, is there enough room to create, you know, use arborites? I don't know if that's the actual plant you would use, but there could be a row, consistent row of arborites that kind of take that turn.
Sure.
And go then further east down that row until you get past that point, to your point.
Yeah, it could even be staggered planting. It doesn't necessarily have to be a wall or a row. It could be staggered so that it is.
Sure, absolutely.
Blocking, if that situation exists, or if it's a problem for the neighbors.
I, I certainly think that that could be a condition, again, you know, amending the legislation to require the applicant to do some sort of screening at that, in that area to provide that headlights aren't shining off the property through that buffer piece back to the, the other homeowner.
Yeah, and this, I think we touched on this last time you were here, in lieu of mounding, which you're correct, mounding could be detrimental to existing mature trees as you're burying the root zone. So perhaps, you know, some of these other alternatives would, would work.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's something that we're willing to definitely consider for sure. I mean, we've done it on other projects in the past, in situations like this, so it's a very common request.
Well, you always have a situation with property of that nature, whether it's a single-story or a double-story home, where those lights are going to be invading those houses at different times, whether it be, of course, in the summer, you're going to have better vegetation cover, but in the winter, those lights are going to be distracting the people.
Yeah, and like the last time we talked, you, you seemed to indicate most of your traffic, parking and traffic would tend to be between. parking and traffic, would tend to be between the first phase and then, you know, in the second phase. Because that's where we have a lot of parking spaces to the side, you know, to the south. There's not really...there's not really that much anyway. So, most of the traffic would be between the buildings.
So, have you decided on how you're going to assign these ten spaces to garages? Who has access to those and who don't?
Sure. That's a good question. So, that's typically something that will work with our property manager on those details. So, just depending upon...and it could be something that's initially rolled out, or it could be something that's explored, you know, determining...or depending upon the demand of the parking spaces. But yes, we'd certainly talk with our property management company on the best way to make sure that the residents have the parking that's needed.
I've seen incidences in situations like that where, if the parking garages are not adequate for each unit, that they are actually assigned to a unit. So, you know, when you rent that, of course, the rent's going to be adjusted for that, but it's assigned to a particular unit. That way, you don't have a debate as to who gets it and who don't, if you don't rent one that's available too.
Yeah, absolutely. We've done it different ways, you know, just depending upon the property itself.
So, regarding the parking, are there a hundred and seven spaces for a hundred and four units? So, basically, one space per unit? Is there any additional parking, other than the...I believe it was six other spaces? How many other spaces would be available in that?
So, our existing project that's there now, I would even argue that might even have the spaces we probably used. So, you know, we would be relying upon a portion of the existing parking spaces with Hamilton Crossing senior Ds with the new spaces that this project would create.
So, there's no designated...if I'm a...
Right.
There's no designated parking for me as a renter in one of these apartments? I wouldn't have a designated parking spot?
I guess the answer is we could. We could. It's just that that hasn't been specifically worked out yet. So, that's the question that we have on our list to talk to our property manager about when that time comes, because we could be able to ensure that everyone has the parking that's needed, and we're not creating a burden to one of their car.
In your other building, do those tenants typically have a vehicle?
Because it's a senior housing project, at least in this project, at least there...I don't quite know the percentage of people that have a car, but it's not...I don't believe it's not one for every unit that's there. We also like to utilize the existing transportation system too. And that's part of the tax credit application process, because they like to see that you locate your projects, close proximity to transportation. So, we also like to encourage that as well. And it is pretty close to a must-line, so...
So, these forty units probably would be indicative of the other sixty-eight, sixty-seven? As far as the demographics and number of vehicles that...
Because this would be a family project, so it would be different in that aspect, which it probably would have more cars than the senior Ds. At least, that's what we found in our projects.
So, I guess I...just to put a fine point on it, in your experience, based on other projects, you have the parking for the new construction combined with the availability from the first project would be sufficient?
Yes.
Yes.
I can't quote it, but I believe the legislation for the first phase one actually parked the senior housing building at three-quarters of space per unit. So, it was sixty-seven spaces for sixty-four units that left. It was actually...the parking lot was overdesigned, so that did leave more spaces than what was required. And I believe that was probably intended that way in order to accommodate the future development.
Now, that back parking lot, or the parking lot for the current building, is never full. Never. I mean, it's usually, on a really busy day, it may be half.
Oh, the other thing I'd ask, I know, Care, you have talked about it, but I know you have the ability to kind of give counsel maybe a little bit more of an in-depth view of what this development will be like once it's constructed.
So, I can drive around here. If you have questions about specific places or things you want to see, obviously, this is computer renderings and graphics, so I'm not...I can't represent exactly what is there. But I, you know, we've got a pretty good ability to kind of give you a good view of what we're planning on doing. Apologize for the junkiness of this, but...so, you know, this shows the relationship between the two buildings. You can see the little gray boxes there that I've got that represent the houses to the south. This is a lot smoother last time.
It really was. Because there's more people watching.
The other guy used it on battery.
Poor Marty.
Can you give us an overview?
From way up in the sky?
Sure.
The helicopter. Get a drone.
Yeah. If you get motion sickness, leave away. You should try this with the virtual reality headset on. It makes you really sick a lot. Are there any questions?
So, are the apartments...do you have to walk into like a lobby area? Because I couldn't really tell on that. Or is there like the...it kind of looks like the center you walk into.
Well...
Are they facing out or...
The buildings...these are typical breezeway buildings. I'll zoom in here.
Okay, I'm going to look away.
Yeah, sorry. So, you'll have a...on the sixteen-unit building, there's an entry piece like this where you can walk in. And then in here, there's a stair...a stairway that gets you to the second floor.
Okay.
So, there's eight units that would access this stair. And then, you know, if we turn around here, there's another similar access point.
Is there an elevator?
No.
Yep. So, these are not...how about the bottom floor? Are they handicap accessible?
We will be providing one, two...two one-bedroom units and one two-bedroom unit as a fully accessible unit, which would be probably about...it's actually two units more than what would be required by code.
And so, that's...that's for the all-three buildings? Or is that for each building?
No, no, that would be for all three buildings.
All three buildings. So, each building may have one handicap unit on the ground floor?
On the ground floor, yes.
I was told there were some interior elevations.
We don't have...in this rendering, we don't have any, but I do have photos of a similar project that was...that's been built by Homeport. That shows the interior finishes that we plan to use.
Yeah, it's not that these are the exact colors and styles, but the idea, you know...
A general idea.
Right, yeah, exactly. And these are our homes that we have recently completed, so these are the most up-to-date finish types that we've been providing to our other projects.
I see the notes from the finding commission where it's fully equipped kitchens with washer dryer hookups.
Does it come equipped with a washer on the top?
No, just the hookers.
You said fully equipped.
Right.
What other questions does counsel have? Or what other information do you have to share with us? From either parties?
Can we talk about the Trumpaqua building materials in detail?
The materials for the building are intended to be complementary to the front building. The brick would be the same brick. The stone would be the same stone. The siding would be the same color. In this particular building design, we wanted it, just from the shape of it, wanted to bring a little bit more of a modern touch to it, but still be a complementary of the existing design aesthetic. So, they are going to be...I wouldn't call them matching pairs of buildings, but they will certainly be complementary in terms of materials that are used.
And again, just like we spoke about last time, the renderings don't necessarily do it justice. There is stone, there's brick, there's hardy board. Again, matching...similar matching materials to the first phase. You know, the brick is not going to be as orangey that, you know, that I think it's the kind of show.
Right, Care. So, in the new building versus the old, you can kind of see the similarities, at least in color. You know, that's not truly representational what's there now, but you can see the relationship that we're trying to tie back to the existing building.
I believe you said before that the one-bedroom apartments will be approximately six hundred square feet, and the two-bedrooms approximately eight hundred square feet with two baths?
That's correct.
What other questions does counsel have?
So, again, Mr. President, if I could, you know, obviously, the applicant is happy to have the legislation, the section amended to require additional screening in what I'll refer to as the southwest corner to prohibit the headlights from traffic coming onto the site, from it being able to shine across and into the yards of anyone who's across that area. I would say in an area not to...not to be less than from the edge of the building, from the western edge of building one, I'll call it building A, to the property line. So, again, it gets that entire corner.
I like the proposal of the six-foot privacy fence all the way across from the garage. That protects everyone through there. That's just my look at it.
We definitely want happy neighbors, shiny ones, long-term owners, so...
That's...I don't see anything wrong with amending the legislation.
They could do the evergreens at the corners that comes around, and then between the garage and those, put a privacy fence, six-foot.
I'm sorry, say that again, sir.
I said, if they desire to put the evergreens along the corner there, and then between those and the garages, do the six-foot privacy fence, I think that should pretty well cover people on the south side there.
I think that's...I think that's a fine suggestion, sir.
I would...while I don't have a vote, I do have a little bit of a voice. I would caution counsel in allowing a new project like this, a new...a newly-built building. Because I don't want to see a precedent set in that we let somebody else allow...I look at this as being brand-new. I look at that brush line back there, whatever...whatever greenery line, whatever you want to call it. But to allow an invasive, non-native plant to stay in that location, I believe sets...sends the wrong message, and it also may set a precedent for later on. That stuff is nasty. The state of Ohio's outlawed it. You can't sell it. Every park system in Columbus has worked years to eradicate it. I know that our own park system is in the same process. One of those plants produces hundreds of berries that the birds eat. They are non-nutritional. And when the birds get done with them, they sprout new plants. So, whatever you decide to put in there, I caution you, you should take that into consideration. Like I said, I don't get a vote, but I would certainly not be in favor of allowing plant material like that to exist on something that's new.
Can I just ask what...
It's Japanese honeysuckle.
Well, no, I know what it is.
And it can look like a tree, and it can get trunks on it like that.
I...no, no. My question is, Mr. President, is your suggestion that...I think the recommendation was a six-foot privacy fence from the garages all the way down to the southern...to the eastern property line? Is your recommendation that the applicant, on their property, clear any honeysuckle?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to make sure I understand what...
That there should...that should all be taken out. If it's on their property, then it should be taken out.
Well, and if we put the fence up, I mean, more than likely, based on the dimension between, you know, that drive and the property line, the fence would more likely be...
Would be doing that anyway.
At property line, so we would have to clear out, you know, any kind of honeysuckle or other invasive species or plantain or whatever it would be in order to construct that fence.
And as many other cities have done, we should outlaw ourselves in this city, because it is nasty stuff. Takes over everything. It crowds out all the native plants, of which there are many that are no longer around. That's all. My environmental thing. Can't help but...that's my...
That's a good one, though.
Y'all worried about the Facebook, I'm worried about the environment.
So, if I could, then, then if there was to be a amendment, that...the amendment would be that the...you know, in section one, at the end of the sentence, would be, "In addition, the applicant will be required to put in a six-foot privacy fence extending from the eastern property line, south..." or what...I'm sorry, the western property line, east all the way to abutting the garages, and in so also clear invasive species. Is that...
Yes. I'm good with that, as long as everyone...
I don't make amendments, I'm just maybe wording it for others.
No, I know. And that's something that we'll have to have put into the legislation, and then we would be able to act on it, assuming it's what people's wishes are.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, you...again, just be clear. You're not going to require them to go clear honeysuckle in the entire city. We could. honeysuckle in the entire city, we could.
Is, um, is there any consideration for a, um, a less, a, a, a lower fence that would be installed more along the edge of the pavement versus along the property line, um, that may be four foot and would be the top of the-
The headlights.
Um, at the top of the topography versus-
You're talking about where the ground, the elevation is higher.
Yeah, uh, I'm, I'm just concerned about, um, what taking out the existing chain link fence, um, as well as installing a new six-foot privacy fence will do to, um, one, the ability to maintain, um, the, the edge of the property as well as what it might do to the existing trees that are there, because I, I think you would be surprised if you walked that site, um, how established there are, um, some fairly nice-looking deciduous trees.
Oh, I'm su- I'm sure there are.
That's why I brought up the notion of strategically placing sections to mitigate any light pollution that might be coming off of vehicles as they make the correct turns, as opposed to taking down a six-foot chain link fence, disturbing the root zone of all those trees and putting in a six-foot fence all the way down through there.
And also, just for a comment too, I mean, I just want to confirm with, when I just did a survey, just to a hundred percent make sure that the fence is on our property.
Could it not be, but-
It, it probably is, but-
But you're right, it might be set a foot off.
It wouldn't be the first time that, you know, the Swimland fence wasn't actually on Swimland, right?
So, actually on the opposite side of the building, between the existing parking and, um, and, uh, the, the new construction, is kind of what I would propose, that we, um, amend the legislation with, which would be a, a, a four-foot fence, um, that comes in, um, that, that's located in eight or sixteen-foot length, that has also been, um, landscaped to create more of a folly fence rather than an actual fence. I think that does a-
A landscape feature.
I think that does a few things in terms of-
Still have to take security, you know, top two, you don't want to create something that people can hide behind, you know?
Can I ask that you give us a drawing showing, just a s- a small rendering so we have an idea, so members of council will have an idea what is being-
Certain.
Would appreciate that.
I apologize for the floating parking stripes.
You don't notice it, if you don't mention it, Karen, nobody can realize it's floating.
Well, typically, the parking stripe doesn't have a shadow, so. I kind of wondered about that, I thought it was another line. What other questions?
So, I, I guess my question would be, am, am I understanding that really the, the major concern with counsel is how the screening in that area surrounding, you know, as people drive in is the, is the predominant issue?
That's what it appears to me to be.
And, and, and like, I do want to make-
That's a concern of mine.
I do want to make sure that we're addressing all the concerns, because I certainly don't want to go through this again in two more weeks. I want to make sure we've got everything taken care of.
So it's, it is a screen?
I guess it's a screen, I guess my only question would be, again, I, I don't think that the applicant has a mind, or has a, has a problem tabling this for two weeks. My question is, if we, i- if there's a consensus of counsel that it'll be a four-foot fence along the, the parking lot with landscaping, is that sufficient for majority of, or for the, you know, for the consensus of counsel, or are there other options that counsel would want to look at that would necessitate a two-week delay?
I would, I would like to see some drawings on what to propose, so we have an, I would have an idea of what's going on. They, they could do up a rendering of the four-foot fence and spacing as, as Bob was recommending, and then one showing us a six-foot fence and, and what that would encounter doing, so. Our attention, at least my intention is not to overburden the project, it's just to not interfere with the privacy of the residents to the south.
For the purpose of a potential motion or an amendment to the legislation, what you're looking at is the landscape plan that shows, uh, in plan with, uh, with species of plants identified, um, what I would propose for that, uh, for the piece of ground south of the pavement. Um, those are, um, sixteen-foot fences, um, spaced approximately twelve feet apart, um, with trees planted between them as well as bushes extending the length of the fence. So, for the purpose of the legislation, we could use this as an example to be, this, to use the same pattern extended from the west side of the garage to the east side of the bend of the road, if that would be-
I think that it is.
Yes, the rendering that I showed earlier is, 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 um, a, a visual depiction of what you're seeing in the paint.
I think that it is, and what I'm hearing is you're willing to, to rectify it all and, and come to a solution, so however that needs to be worded.
Well, again, I, I think the applicant would, again, if we're just thinking about language for amending, for the purpose of amending, I, I think the applicant, I, I think the legislation could be worded in such a way that would give city council, um, confidence that this issue is going to, um, be rectified whether, you know, in a manner that's similar to this.
Yeah, just basically to guarantee it'll be addressed and I'm good with that.
And again, that can, I mean, that can be, again, that can be added to the legislation this evening and, you know, that can be something put into the legislation to require that.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Morrison?
I, I would like to have it table for two weeks and have them write, redo the legislation and, and state in that legislation what their intent is. I don't see where it's going to affect the progress of the, uh, project at all.
I, I don't, I mean, I, I'll defer to counsel, if, if that's the desire, then, then so be it. Um, again, I, I think we could come up with legislation and put it in there, but again, I'll, I'll defer, I mean, I don't-
I think it also gives members of council another opportunity at our next meeting, at our next committee meeting to discuss, and, you know, if we would have the stuff by then, I, I would prefer that we would have it for our next meeting and then we can talk about it, and if something's not right, you will still have seven more days to come up with, uh, you know, a better solution or another solution. Are we good with all of that?
Okay.
Counsel's in agreement with that, well, then I think we can move on.
Need a motion to table.
Need a, a motion to table, yeah.
Who would like to make that motion?
I would make that motion, Mr. President, to table ordinance ninety, twenty eighteen, uh, for two weeks.
To the sixth.
Table to the sixth.
Table this to the sixth.
Be a second.
I'll second.
Well, I have a motion by Mrs. Morrison and a, and a second by Ms. Connison, to table ordinance ninety, twenty eighteen to our next regularly scheduled meeting. Questions or comments?
Bailey.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
All right, it has been tabled to our next regularly scheduled meeting. All right, moving on, we will now move on to ordinance ninety-one, twenty eighteen. Um, it's an ordinance vacating a portion of the east-west alley, north of Main Street and west of Lambeau Lane, in the blower edition, directly behind thirty-nine forty-eight through thirty-nine seventy-two, east Main Street.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce and move the adoption of ordinance ninety-one, twenty eighteen.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Connison and a second by Mr. Cantor for introduction and adoption of ordinance ninety-one, twenty eighteen, questions or comments? Ms. Thomas, please call the roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
All right, the, uh, ordinance ninety-one, twenty eighteen has been adopted. Um, we had those second readings, uh, on, on the agenda this evening, so we'll move on to our first readings, and we have up first, we have ninety-six, uh, twenty eighteen, it's amending one-six-one point one-one B, legal holidays of the codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance nine-
I want to amend.
Okay.
You want to amend?
Yes.
Yeah, I introduce, you want to amend.
Mr. President, I'd like to amend ordinance ninety-six, two thousand eighteen, section one-six-one-eleven of the legal holiday, B-ten, and move for suspension of rules.
Second.
So we are striking ten-
Striking ten.
We're not, we're not suspending any rules, right?
Okay, so we're amending-
So we're amending-
We're amending section one-six-one-eleven of the legal holiday and strike, and striking the ten.
All right, I, I missed a word.
That is correct.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay.
All right, second. All right, so I have a motion, uh, by Ms. Elmore and a second by Ms. Connison, to amend ordinance nine-six-two-zero-one-eight, section one, one-six-one-point-one-B-ten, striking, uh, the, uh, B-
B-ten.
B-ten from the legislation. Questions or comments? Ms. Thomas, please call the roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
All right, ordinance ninety-six, twenty eighteen has been amended, now you can introduce and ask for suspension.
Now, Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance nine-six, two thousand eighteen, move for suspension of rules.
Second.
Well, I have a motion by Ms. Elmore and a second by Ms. Connison for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance ninety-six, twenty eighteen, question or comments? Ms. Thomas, please call the roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance, ordinance ninety-six, twenty eighteen.
Mr. President, move for adoption.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Elmore and a second by Ms. Connison for adoption of ordinance ninety-six, twenty eighteen, Ms. Thomas, please call the roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-six, twenty eighteen has been adopted. Our next ordinance is ninety-seven, twenty eighteen, it's approving and making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from unappropriated monies in the flexible spending fund to the flexible spending expense account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance ninety-seven, two thousand eighteen, move for suspension of rules.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance ninety-seven, twenty eighteen, questions or comments? Ms. Thomas, please call the roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance ninety-seven, twenty eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of ordinance ninety-seven, twenty eighteen, Ms. Thomas, please call the roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-seven, twenty eighteen has been adopted. Our next ordinance is ninety-eight, twenty eighteen, it's authorizing and approving a supplemental appropriation in the amount of ninety thousand dollars from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the transfer expense account, authorizing and approving a fund transfer in the amount of ninety thousand dollars from the transfer expense account to the accrued benefits reserve fund, authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of ninety thousand dollars from the accrued benefits reserve fund to the accrued benefits reserve expense account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance ninety-eight, two thousand eighteen, move for suspension of rules.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Cantor for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance ninety-eight, twenty eighteen, questions or comments? Ms. Thomas, please call the roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance ninety-eight, twenty eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Cantor for adoption of ordinance ninety-eight, twenty eighteen, Ms. Thomas, call the roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-eight, twenty eighteen has been adopted. Our next ordinance is ninety-nine, twenty eighteen, it's authorizing and approving the mayor to sign a contract with the fraternal order, fraternal order of police, Capitol City Lodge Nine, for the contract term, January one, two thousand eighteen, to December thirty-one, two thousand twenty, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce ordinance ninety-nine, twenty eighteen, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Connison and a second by Mr. Bailey for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance ninety-nine, twenty eighteen, questions or comments?
Bailey.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, uh, the rules have been suspended on ordinance ninety-nine, twenty eighteen.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr., Ms. Connison and a second by Mr. Bailey for adoption of ordinance ninety-nine, uh, twenty eighteen. I'm glad you're paying attention, Ms. Thomas, you can call the roll again.
Bailey.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-nine, twenty eighteen has been adopted. Next we have ordinance one-hundred, twenty eighteen, it's authorizing and approving a supplemental appropriation in the amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars from the water and sewer mandate improvement fund to the water and sewer mandate improvement expense account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance one-hundred, two thousand eighteen, move for suspension of rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Connison for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance one-hundred, twenty eighteen, questions or comments? Ms. Conn- You just keep jumping. That's all, I got no problem.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
I'm gonna have to be quicker on the draw, I guess. The rules have been suspended on ordinance one-hundred, twenty eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Connison and a second, a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Connison for adoption of ordinance one-hundred, twenty eighteen, Ms. Thomas, please call the roll.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Ordinance one-hundred, twenty eighteen has been adopted. Next we have resolution forty-one, twenty eighteen, it's resolving to approve, then announce certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce resolution forty-one, two thousand eighteen, and move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Heck for introduction and suspension of all rules on resolution forty-one, twenty eighteen, questions or comments? Ms. Thomas, please call the roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on resolution forty-one, twenty eighteen.
Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Heck for adoption of resolution forty-one, twenty eighteen, Ms. Thomas, please call the roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution forty-one, twenty eighteen has been adopted, it's our last item of legislation on the agenda- It's our last item of legislation on the agenda this evening. That brings us to our second opportunity for poll public. Any one of them would like to come forward? You will have up to three minutes. All right, we'll move on to, oh, I'm sorry. I expected some-
You look like you're jaw there.
I'm used to getting pushed over here, so if somebody does jump up right away, I may not catch it.
From the lake, says how you hate neighborhood advocates. I just want to take this opportunity to thank the city leaders and staff for reducing violent crime by forty-eight percent, robberies by forty-seven percent, burglaries last year by thirty-five percent, their lowest in twenty-two years. Thank you for adding four canines to the department for the first time in the department's history. Thank you also for adding two additional school resource officers to work with the youth and teenagers of our community to build stronger relationships and reduce youth violence. Thank you for creating a drug task force that has made numerous drug arrests, seized hundreds of pounds of drugs and thousands of dollars of illegal drug money, making our streets safer. Thank you for hiring a crime analyst to help better match our resources to our problems. Thank you for investing in our parks. Thank you for spending one point three million dollars in Whitehall Community Park to improve the natural beauty of the park, including acres of new meadows with wildflowers and new trails. Thank you for replacing all the playground equipment in all the city parks. Thank you for making two of them totally handicap accessible. Congratulations on that. That has been needed. Thank you for building a splash pad at John Bishop Park for the youngest of our community to enjoy for free. Thank you for not forgetting about our teenagers and partnering with the Y M C A to build a rec center in our community geared towards them. Thank you for adding over twenty acres into our park system for public use. Thank you for caring for seniors in our community, or in our, sorry, our community. Thank you for creating a community paramedic program to work with older residents to ensure that they are on the right medication, going to the doctor, or eliminating barriers that remain in our homes. Thank you for being aggressive in economic development. The more than twenty-two hundred jobs created in this community since two thousand twelve have added vibrancy to this community. Employers like Priority Designs, Heartland Bank, Wasserstrom, and others, thank you for supporting the more than one hundred new built businesses that have opened in Whitehall during the last seven years. Thank you for supporting new and retaining jobs in the city that have added over four million dollars in annual revenue to help pay for all the wonderful progress we are seeing in this community. I hope it continues. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Who else would like to come forward this time?
Gerald Gibson, thirty-eight seventy-seven Dooley Street. One of the things that was spoken about on this community survey was curbs and gutters. Liz McIntosh was in here talking about flooding and infrastructure and so forth. Mr. Woodruff said, with all due respect, that they were scrounging, and paraphrase it, scrounging for or grabbing for any dime they can for those projects. But I I have to say that, you know, one of the reasons that there certainly won't be enough money for those projects is because there's been about twenty million dollars used to appropriate properties. And we all know what that is, including the legal fees and everything else. So we can say that we care about the curbs and gutters and such, but when we spend twenty million dollars of taxpayers' money on other things, it seems there's other priorities. And so when one of the biggest things people cared about was curbs and gutters and that sort of thing, it seemed it seemed like a something that's kind of misplaced. You're wanting to do this, but you're wanting to do that. And I just had to say that because sometimes, and you know how I feel, not everything the city says is everything. And sometimes it takes a citizen, whoever that may be, to come up and let you know what half a part of it is. And that's that's what I've, thank you.
Who else would like to come forward this time? All right, we'll move on to community date board. Somebody's got some.
I think that works up also exhausts. Um, Thursday, we do have a safer Whitehall. Please come out to it over at New Life. The address is four forty-one South Yearling Road. Head to see everybody there at six o'clock. We have a big day coming up, Saturday, October twenty-seventh. There's many events in the city, something for everybody. There is a health and wellness fair, there is a five-k walk run, there's a Halloween walk, there is a citizen of the year award, there is a casino night. Apparently, everybody's on Facebook. Hello out there. Employment for seniors, the five-k, right, so everybody come on out. He's writing on here, the holiday lights. All the Halloween lights, yes. Make sure that your, um, that your houses are fully decorated and illuminated. And W C C A will have judges coming out next week to go ahead and to judge those houses. And then at the Halloween walk, we'll have our citizens go ahead and help us out a little bit more. And then we'll go ahead and have some some winners, which, of course, you're all.
I want to add something else to the date board regarding employment for seniors. They featured two hiring events held at employment for seniors at forty-three hundred East Broad Street. One is October the twenty-sixth, from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty, which is contact us communications. The other is R G I S, inventory specialist, retail industry, and retail merchandising. And that one will be held on November the ninth, nine-thirty to eleven-thirty. So employment for seniors is having another, other events for hiring. Yes, they are.
We have Trigger Tree on thirty-first, sixth and eighth.
You have Whitehall Tedx, Whitehall Yearling Tedx, which is, I believe, the twenty-fourth.
Yes.
At the high school. So if you haven't got your tickets, get them now.
Veterans Day Parade, November the tenth.
November the tenth.
Add that to the-
Add that to the high school.
The high school.
Of course, there is the Easter egg hunt, Zach.
It's gonna be probably in March or April.
Yeah.
I believe next next week is the last week for brush pickup.
Yes.
So if you have any brush, if you have any Japanese honeysuckle you want to cut down, which I will. I've I've been working on that stuff for eight years. And I, it's virtually impossible. I will have some out of the city for the city to grind it up. Is that brush for the entire city? Yes. Monday?
Well, they start on, they start on Monday on the western side of the city, and they'll work their way through the entire city.
And I believe that is the last brush pickup of of the year.
It is. We are already starting, we are already in the leaf pickup. Right zone one.
Okay, who else has something else? Who has something else or something?
Just say goodnight. Just say goodnight.
All right, we'll move on to poll council. Mr. Bailey?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all for coming. And it's late. I have a bunch to say, but I will reflect on what Mrs. Blake had to share. And I think she pretty much said it all, and I thank you, ma'am. And that's it.
All right, Ms. Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you for everybody that stayed. It's been a very long meeting, but very informative. And, um, just want to reiterate that we're heading in a positive direction. Crime and drugs are down. There's a satisfaction of high with our city, the officials, and the city amenities and the Y M C A. So I believe what was stated in the survey and what was stated by you, Ms. Blake, thank you very much for your comments, that the city is heading in a positive direction and will continue to head in a positive direction. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Thomas.
You guys are all rock stars out there. Anybody that's on Facebook still, you're all rock stars too, because this was a very long, yeah. Thank you all for coming. I was glad to see some new faces, um, familiar faces, and hope to see you next time.
Mr. Cantor?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all for sitting here for at least three hours. I know four of us have been here for four hours, and somebody's been here since, golly, what is that, thirteen and a half hours? Thank you so much for for doing that today. It's nice to have a school board member. Thanks, Jeff, for coming in. Barb Blake, thank you so much for those comments. You're right on on that. And I'm getting a lot of emails or texts here on my phone. I can't answer them on Facebook, but I got them all, so. I got you. It's not the kids. It's actually citizens. Thank you very much. That's it.
Ms. Heck?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you for everybody turning in on Facebook. Thank you for everybody that came and stayed the whole time. Uh, thank you for those that got up and spoke to us. I know it's not always easy, but we do appreciate it and we do hear you. And the people that did their presentations are here, but I appreciated them and all the information they gave to us.
All right, Ms. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank everyone for coming and their input. Our thank you for all your thank yous. It's well noted and appreciated. And Jerry, appreciate your input, but I think you are aware, as most everybody is, that you're not comparing apples to apples. You're comparing apples to oranges. The monies and the funds come from different places. Thank you, Mr. Bibbins, for your statistics. And we'd like to thank everyone else for coming. Thank you.
Well, I especially want to thank everyone for staying tonight. And I really appreciate seeing the new faces. Now, some of those faces are gone, but some of them are still here. I really like to see when we have a lot of people here. I like to see the participation. I like to see the new people coming to the meetings. So keep it up. If you're out there on Facebook, come on in and join us sometime live. I mean, really live. All right, so we have, we have no further business before us this evening, so I think a motion of adjournment would be in order.
Mr. President, move to adjourn.
Second.
Jumped in there again, didn't you?
Good night, Dan.
Enjoy your vacation.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Elmore for adjournment. Ms. Thomas, please call the roll.
Bailey.
No.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned. We'll see you on our next meeting.